Good evening. Good evening. I will now call the December ninth to twenty twenty-five meeting of the Ben Lapine School Board of Directors to order. I would like to introduce our participants this evening. My immediate left is Director's Cameron Fisher, Kena Chadwick and Jen Lynch, Vice Chair Amy Tatum and Director Ross Tomlin are joining us virtually. To my immediate right Superintendent Dr. Stephen Cook, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Lisa Burke and Board Clerk Janet Bojanowski, and I am Marcus LaGrand, Chair of the Board. We also have student representatives join us this evening. We will please introduce yourself, include the school, and which group you're representing tonight.
Good afternoon and good evening. I'm Jack Striker as a junior at Caldera High School.
Good evening. I'm Brendan Medina, a senior at Mountain View High School.
And I'm Caroline Dersch, a senior at Summit High School.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. In order to ensure safety and ability for the board to focus on its business, we ask that all the audience here to the board members attending expectations. These include being seated and holding signs under chinlift. If there are any available seats, individuals may wait in the lobby until one is available. And I want to thank you all for that understanding. And will you please stand, remove your hat, and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you didn't hear it, it was very adobo. The young lady was saying the Pledge of Allegiance really, really loud. Thank you so for doing that. We'll now move to agenda item number three, review of the agenda. Dr. Cook, are there any changes to the agenda?
Thank you Chair LaGrand. We do not have any changes to the agenda, but I would like to draw particular note to the fact that we have separated our reports section into both an external report and internal reports. We've separated them and we've moved our internal reports later in the agenda. So to try to get people, so they don't have to stay and listen to us talk all night if they don't want to be here. So thank you all for being here. We're looking forward to those sharings.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. Fellow board members, are there any changes to the agenda? Okay. Hearing no changes to the agenda, we will proceed to agenda as noticed. And now I would turn to Dr. Cook for our champion for students.
Thank you Chair LaGrand. At this time, could I be joined by Michelle Dulcey? Yes, please. Sorry, we're just having secrets. I am so honored to give this month's Champion for Students Award to a valued member of the Pilot Butte Middle School community, Learning Specialist Michelle Dulcey. Her nomination came from parents Amy and Scott Bledsoe. Here's a bit of what they shared. Michelle consistently goes above and beyond to support the students with special needs, creating an environment where every child feels capable of success. Her patience and individualized approach have made tremendous differences for her son, for our son, helping him grow in confidence and academic skills. Pilot Butte Principal Jessica Gambi, right back there in the back, everybody wave to Jessica. Michelle has been a wonderful addition to the Pilot Butte family this year. She approaches students and families with empathy and care, engaging from a place of understanding while meeting needs and pushing for continued growth for her students. So Michelle, in recognition of your outstanding service as a learning specialist to the Pilot Butte Middle School community, by leading with compassion and patience, you consistently go the extra mile to support our students. Your creative tailored approach makes profound impact on their confidence, their independence, and their academic progress. Your advocacy for each student's needs, along with your collaborative partnership with families and staff, ensures and enriches the learning environment for all. Ben Lapine Schools is proud to recognize you as a true champion for our students. Thank you. Let's get a photo. Nope, nope, nope. You don't have to say anything, but we need a photo. Jessica, come on up. We're going to expect a photo from you too. One more round of applause for Michelle. Thank you, Michelle. And that's it for celebrations tonight.
All right, congratulations, and I want to thank you, Dr. Cook. We're now here for my student representatives that have joined us this evening. The floor is yours.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. The Student Voice Council would like to show our appreciation and the continued support the board provides and the recognition of the topics we focus on, all through students' perspective. We are your Student Voice Council representatives for tonight's meeting.
Hello, I'm Jack Striker as a junior at Caldera High School.
Good evening. I'm Brendan Medina, a senior at Mountain View High School.
And I'm Caroline Dersch, a senior at Summit High School. At our meeting last Tuesday, we participated in an activity where we explored personal strengths, personal traits that are strengths for us, and traits that we can improve on to better ourselves as members of this council. We took what we learned and then recapped how the November board meeting went, created a list of action items, and reflected on the presentation. We also conversed on the topics of recent discussion and central focus, specifically the upcoming phone policy and standards-based instruction and grading.
Centrally, we agreed upon one major focus for the upcoming months. We, as a group, are looking to see action on the topics we've brought to the board and administration by association. Specifically on the highlight for standards-based instruction and grading, we as a Student Voice Council are looking for the three central claims we outlined last month. Those action items were as follows: communication and transparency, consistency of implementation, and finally, student impact, both long and short term.
To be delivered by the Student Voice Council to admin teams at each school is a central list of claims and issues students have been facing. This is an effort to have these teams across the district understand the shared student perspective discussed by the Student Voice Council. Furthermore, we intend also to provide a similar list to the superintendent to achieve the same goal. The Student Voice Council would like to thank the school board members for their continued support and recognition. We'd also like to say thanks on behalf of the Student Voice Council, and that on behalf of the Student Voice Council, we look forward to creating a better learning environment for all students at every Ben Lapine school with the continued support the board provides. Thank you, and that is all the Student Voice Council has to share tonight.
Thank you, students. Appreciate it very much. I want to thank you to your advisors for doing a great job of continuing to work with you all as well. Directors, do you have any questions for the Student Voice Council based on the topics that they mentioned this evening?
I have a couple questions. Are y'all gonna provide, I guess, a little presentation or anything on what you are hearing from students around grading and also the phones?
We haven't put together a presentation yet, but if you guys would like that, we can definitely do so.
I would like that. And another question I had, I know I've asked this before, do y'all have an inbox that, like, any student within the district can email and say, hey, this is important to me, and some other people, if they have a topic that they like to bring to your attention?
Do you mean an inbox as the Student Voice Council in total?
Yeah.
We don't, but I, I think that's a great idea, and we could look into that.
Cool. Thank you.
Yeah, to that end, is there something that the district can do to better support your process of gathering feedback from your, from fellow students about things like the phone policy and standards-based grading?
I just think the further more allotments of our voices here in this kind of meetings and coming into actual buildings to hear from students is always a valued input of your guys' time, and we really do appreciate when student voices are heard in that kind of perspective. So I think that's the most valuable thing that is currently happening and can continue to happen.
All right, directors online, do you have any questions? Any additional questions, directors? All right, thank you so, so much. And like is, like always, please, if you have any questions when we are talking about the various topics that we have tonight, please, please chime in. You are a part of this as well, okay? Thank you so, so much. And now, back to our regular scheduled meeting, and thank you Julie for joining us again. At this time, we adjourn the regular board meeting for a public hearing regarding the Ben International Charter School renewal request. Included in tonight's agenda is the public hearing to receive public input on the charter school renewal for Ben International School. Ben International School will share their presentation. Individuals who have signed up for the public hearing will be allowed to make their statement. In accordance with GP-six, public comment regarding the agenda topic would be held for ten minutes or two minutes per speaker for a total of more than ten minutes. A timer is provided at the large screen as you see above to ensure every speaker receives updates during the presentation on the remaining time. If the speaker goes over time, or if the student's message is not in adherence with our policies, for example, being personally directed, abusive, discriminatory, repetitive, or off-topic, I might ask the speaker to cease and terminate their speaker's privileges to address the board. I will now hear from Melissa Barnes Delacchia, I think I should know that name by now, for Ben International School, for a presentation. Melissa, welcome.
Thank you, and with slides coming up here now.
Does this be ten? This will be ten?
No, this is just presentation. This is not public comment. This is just presentation.
This presentation, your presentation for international renewal. Yeah, thank you. Yes.
Fantastic. Good evening and thank you. Oh, sorry, I shouldn't have. I want my full five minutes. All right. Still working on that. Okay. I still want my five minutes. Good evening. Thank you Superintendent Cook, Deputy Superintendent Burke, Chair LaGrand, our Board of Directors, and our Student Voice Council. Thank you so much for having me here. Most of us know each other well, but my purpose tonight is to have you know Ben International School well, and I'm extremely excited to be here and help you understand why renewing our charter isn't just appropriate, it's beneficial for this district. So, who we are. This is a small K-8 school with a distinctive model, international education, project-based learning, and whole-child programming, and it works. We graduate students who are high school-ready, academically confident, and able to advocate for themselves in high school and beyond. We also expand the district's reach. Nearly thirty percent of our families would not otherwise choose Ben Lapine Schools through a variety of homeschool, private, and out-of-district families. BIS brings them in, Ben Lapine Schools keeps them. That's a type of partnership that we are very proud to offer. So who are our students? We have two hundred and thirty-four students, most of whom live in Ben Lapine, eleven percent don't. And our students reflect the diversity that our families want. Twenty-seven percent are BIPOC, twenty-seven percent SES, eighteen percent neurodiverse, two percent or more non-binary or transgender. And families choose us because their children feel safe, they feel seen, and they feel celebrated. And as a parent in a biracial household, my dad, or my dad, my husband is here tonight, I know how powerful that is. So, belonging. Belonging isn't just a climate measure, it's an enrollment driver. BIS creates a place for students who might otherwise fall through the cracks or leave public systems entirely. Our students and families make that clear in our youth truth data. I honed in on the two pieces that actually Ben Lapine added to youth truth because they cared about it the most. Students put us at the eighty-second percentile for inclusion, seventy-fourth percentile for student voice, and families put us at the ninety-eighth percentile when they're evaluating the DEI. And here's the real flex. When we disaggregate the data, our most marginalized families rate us even higher. Looking at our SES families, they actually put it, put us at the hundredth percentile. That's not accidental, that's intentional culture. And belonging directly fuels academic growth. We focus on elevating proficiency by closing gaps, especially for students who are two or more grade levels behind. Last year, our students outperformed the district and the state in ELA and science. In math, we matched the district and continue to push growth there, just as the district is. These results confirm that BIS is a high-performing public school that strengthens Ben Lapine. Last year, let's focus in on ELA only, because I only have five minutes, and we increased our proficiency by six percent. But not only did we do that, we, my, my proud point is that we moved seven percent of our kids out of far below, kids that were two or more years below grade level. This is the quiet, persistent work of closing opportunity gaps, and we are proud of it. In science, we saw even stronger acceleration. Thirteen percent increase in proficiency and decrease in that far below by seventeen percent. Small school or not, individual grade levels or not, these gains are substantial, and they are reflective of a rigorous, inquiry-driven, hands-on instruction. And if you want to look farther and look into national outcomes, here they are. This is our ELA again, because I'm honing in on one. Last year, whoops, sorry, on the NWA map, a nationally-normed assessment that we use, every single grade level lands in high-growth, high-achievement quadrant. Consistency across every grade is the hallmark of a strong school. It's not a one cohort or a one-teacher anomaly, it is every single one. And, we achieve these outcomes without drill and kill. And that's what I'm really here to tell you about, is we are a proof point for a project-based, constructivist learning, learning environment that engages students, and we help them excel academically and develop the agency that serves them well in high school. Now, before I take questions, I want to raise one equity issue that is not in the slides, and this is one that I have been working, oh, am I already over? Okay, that I want to raise, because I've been working behind the scenes with the district, and I would ask your permission because of the multiple false starts to let me finish. It's going to be less than thirty seconds. Because of the state formula, our funding goes to Ben Lapine Schools before it comes to, back to BIS. When we examine the flow of dollars in and out, BIS generates roughly one-point-one million dollars that stays at Ben Lapine Schools. It does not come back to our students. A case in point, our K-five students receive only eighty-five percent of their intended per pupil student allocation. And because we may pay for, we must pay for our facility out of our per pupil funds, that's another twenty percent that gets diverted away from our kids. And I want to make sure that we understand this isn't the district's fault. It's a state policy problem. But, as we enter the MOU process, which happens after the approval process, I would like to invite the board to look at this through an equity lens. If we believe every student deserves the resources that are allocated to them, then we should explore solutions that allow BIS students to receive the funding generated to them on their behalf. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Before we go to any questions, we have actually any of the speakers who were provided for the charter renewal to be able to speak, and I'm having to do it right now, and then we can go into the questions after that.
We were, so public comment?
It wasn't public comment, it was two of your people that were mentioned in my notes. It's like, at the time, I want to hear from those who requested to provide public input regarding the charter school renewal, or we want to wait till public comment to do it.
Those are for public comment.
Those are separate from comments, I want to make sure. All right, cool. All right, that being said, yes, directors, do you have any additional questions for Principal Delacchia or CEO? Are you CEO or principal?
I'm now using superintendent-principal because
Okay, got it.
Two-thirds of school districts in Oregon are under eight-hundred students in enrollment.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Directors, questions?
I have a couple questions. Thanks. This is a really dynamic presentation. I'm curious about, back to that first slide of enrollment, and maybe you explain this, but Bend, eighty-nine percent, then Central Oregon, eleven percent, you have any examples of what that might be? Is it out of Ben Lapine School District, or is it like Ben Lapine?
The eleven percent are students that live beyond the Ben Lapine borders, and so that is Sisters, Redmond is, Sisters, Redmond, and Primeville are primarily, where those primarily come from.
Okay, thanks. And then, I'm not sure I understand the homeschool plus private to public. Explain to me what that means, sorry.
No problem at all. We get a lot of homeschool families that are ready to come in to public school, but they're not ready to come into a Ben Lapine public school or a Redmond public school, et cetera. And so we get a lot of families who would continue to have their children in homeschool if they didn't have a small option like ours, and there just simply aren't very many in Ben Lapine, and so that's the homeschool. And in private, we have families that, if we did not exist, would go to Seven Peaks, Cascades Academy, St. Francis, et cetera.
Okay, okay. And then, another question, with the eighteen percent neurodiverse, are you saying that eighteen percent of your students are on IEPs or self-identify as neurodiverse? Or, you have one specialist, is that right?
We only have one specialist. We get a hundred and sixty-five thousand back of the double-weighted money that's to our kids, and with that, we hire a specialist. We, as of today's count, we have twenty-four, or almost twenty-four, once we fully enroll our next two kids. But we have, we will probably be closer to twenty percent, and that's probably going to be about eleven percent that are on IEPs, and then another nine percent that are in 504s, which I think we all see as a growing population, and those are largely students with ADHD who previously might have been on a five, on an IEP, but now are being shifted to 504s.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, directors, online? Director Tatum, Director Tomlin? Okay. Any more questions? One thing I do want to definitely make sure we clarify as well, when you mentioned the, the funding that the state does, that's based on the eighty percent, I think that's something you have to definitely take up with the state, looking at that piece, and I understand where you're coming from with that, and I know you've been working behind the scenes on those pieces, but I wanted to make sure the directors understand that clarification. That's a funding model concern versus a Ben Lapine concern, just want to make sure we have that clarification as well. All right? So, thank you for everything regarding Ben International School renewal process. The board will review the information received tonight. Yes, ma'am? Oh, okay, I didn't know if they wanted to or not. That's what I was thinking.
Yes, sorry. So we have two people signed up for public comment. Excuse me, a founding teacher who is also a parent, and then a parent who is also a teacher.
And I have them listed here, and I'll, I'll call them up. I think it's Amanda, is it Amanda Wright, correct? And then after Amanda, it will be Jill Tisdale, Tisdale, I believe? Yes, is that correct? Yes. Whoever wants to go first? Okay, thank you. No worries. Thank you. And you know you have two minutes to be able to talk about the various things. Just want to give you insight. Cool. Thank you very much.
Oh, there we go, fancy. Well, first I want to say thank you for having me and bearing with me. I am a fifth-grade school teacher who's used to speaking in front of ten-year-olds for over a decade, every day. So, not as used to speaking in front of adults, so thank you. I am Amanda Wright. I am a founding teacher at Ben International School, so it's our eleventh year. And so I've been there since before day one. I was on the fundraising committee as we were getting started, actually. And tonight, I want to share with you why I wholeheartedly support our school, even though I know I could make more money going to another school based on that state's funding model. I could do a lateral transfer and be making ten percent more, which, as we all know in this economy, would be pretty sweet. But as I tell my families, it's not about the money. It's based on, for me, Simon Sinek, start with why. And my why has always been our kids, not the paycheck. So in traditional systems, which I taught in previously, teachers such as myself often felt boxed in by rigid curriculum or kind of that one-size-fits-all mandate that we have to do to reach the majority of our students. But here at our charter school, we're given the freedom to have our teaching voice actually heard, the freedom to be creative, to draw on our expertise, and to tailor our approaches to fit truly what's best for all of our students, not just the majority. And I know you hear that a lot probably from teachers, but it's not theory, it's really the heartbeat of every single one of our classrooms. I can use what I know and what I've studied to do best to design lessons that spark curiosity, turning history into a simulation where students are living it, or integrating art and math into science, and also pull that into my language arts instruction, really making it all interconnected. And this flexibility to adapt also allows me to allow my instruction to adapt on the fly, whether it's providing the extra challenges for my tag students and my advanced learners that are quite tagged, or provide additional scaffolds for my students that need them, and really tailor my instruction to meet their needs. The result, engaging dynamic learning environments where every single child is seen, heard, and valued. I've watched shy students bloom into confident speakers because they know that their voice matters. I've seen kids who once dreaded school arrive excited and ready to dive in. And our approach fosters not just that academic growth, but the social and emotional thriving, creating a community where diversity...
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Ms. Wright, thank you. I've given you twenty-five minutes, twenty-five seconds, I appreciate it. Nope. Sorry.
Can I have five more seconds?
Nope.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
You appreciate it. Thank you. All right, I got a long meeting today. Thank you. I love you all, but, okay. Okay. You got two, you got two speakers. You could use the ten minutes if you would have used other speakers. Let's go. All right. Sorry, not trying to be rude or anything, I was just trying to get going. Thank you, appreciate you all. Thank you. Yes. Ms. Tisdale, thank you very much. How you doing today?
All right. I'm doing well, thank you. How are you?
I'm doing well. It's a good day.
Thank you for having me. My name is Jill Tisdale, and I am an enrichment art teacher at, at our school, but I have, I wanted to speak about my two children who go to our school also. I have a son who's in fifth grade, and he started in kindergarten, and then my daughter is now in eighth grade. And, I know, and she's, she has struggled with a, she has a medical disability, and so she has been at different other Ben Lapine Schools, and I ended up moving her to, to BIS, and it, she has been thriving in this small community with lots of focus from lots of different teachers. I mean, she's got, she does have a resource teacher, but she also has, every teacher in our school is, has an eye out for her. And the same, I would say, with my son as well. So, we offer enrichment programs. I can't imagine her going to a school that didn't have art in it, and music, and Spanish, and, and social-emotional learning, which is, has been just so wonderful for so many of our kids. And I, and I just know that my child, both my children, but my, especially my one child, is able to succeed and thrive in this environment because of our small, our small school and focus on the child-centered, so.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And I finished twenty-five seconds.
Before, before we conclude, I want to thank you all for both of your passion for doing what you do. I appreciate it very much, and I know you're doing a great job of being a provider with your students what you need. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I want to thank you everyone for input regarding the Ben International Charter Renewal. The board will review the information regarding tonight and make a determination regarding the request at our next regular meeting, which will be January thirteenth. So I hope to see you here on that day as well. At this time, we will close the public meeting. All right? And we will now call the December ninth to twenty twenty-five back into order. Okay? And now, we will jump into public comments, okay? We're now moving to public comments. The district, the board and district leadership value communication from students, families, staff, and community members as it will help guide the work of Ben Lapine Schools. Public comment is just many avenues available to ensure these connections. Members of the board, public, may also submit thoughts, questions, or concerns to the board via email as well as in writing. Individual board members also make themselves available for phone, video, or in-person conversations. This said, I want to remind the public that while this is a meeting of the board of directors that takes place in public, it is not a meeting with the public. It is a meeting of the board of directors to conduct the district business. As such, the board will not respond to public comment made during As such, the board will not respond to public comment made during tonight's meeting. Instead, issues will be recorded and referred to the appropriate staff, a person to follow up with you. We'll now open it for public comments. Our policy is typically allowed to two minutes per speaker until the time cap has been reached for the agenda item. A timer is provided on the large screen above and our virtual attendees ensure every speaker receives updates during the presentation on remaining time. If the speaker goes over time or if the speaker's message is not adherent with our pub, our policies, for example, being personally directed, abusive, discriminatory, repetitive and off-topic, we may ask the speaker to cease and terminate the speaker's privilege to address the board. At this time, I would like to call, and I think they're virtual. I'm going to make sure I'm correct. It is, is Tessa, is it Musil?
Musil, yes, Niamh Bur.
Thank you, appreciate it. Tessa, whenever you're ready, you can go.
My name is Tessa Musil Scott. I would like to address the board regarding inequities in South County. My daughter, Olivia Scott, a highly motivated sophomore at Lepine High School, is not provided with the same opportunities that are offered at, I believe, all other high schools in the district. Students at Lepine High School are not provided any in-person foreign language classes. Rather, they log into a website where they are given a vocabulary, a vocabulary list and directed to watch videos of people speaking in that language. This class is not in a virtual synchronous classroom. Our students log in, independent of anyone else, and are expected to learn a language alone. This prevents the students in Lepine from gaining the rich benefits that in-person or even synchronous instruction provides. The COVID pandemic taught us that this is an ineffective learning strategy. In-person instruction provides increased speaking fluency, competence and cultural connection through immediate feedback, spontaneous interaction and structured immersion with peers. For students that are motivated to attend a four-year university, two years of foreign language is a requirement for admission. While an online class checks this box, it feels insincere and facile. Bilingual employees are in high demand and earn five to twenty percent more than employees that only speak one language. Ben Lepine School District should be promoting this marketable skill in a comprehensive format at all schools, not just those in Bend. I appreciate the opportunity to address the board. I look forward to the students in South County being provided the same access to education that their counterparts in Bend are afforded. Thank you.
Thank you, Tessa. I appreciate it very much. Our next is going to be Zoe, is it Maury? Are they all good together? It's going to be Zoe, Vida, Halpern and Simone? Or is it McKenna or Michaela, excuse me, Michaela May? All these together or are they separate? Okay, no problem. And you're, are you Zoe? Hey, Zoe, how you doing?
Good.
Welcome. Whenever you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Zoe Maury and I am a sophomore at Bend High. I'm also an environmental club leader. I care about sustainability and climate action because I know that I will have to grow up and live on our planet and I want to still be able to do the things that I love outside thirty, forty and fifty years from now. We are here today to convince the district to prioritize climate action and take seriously the issues that students really care about. We are aware that the district is currently trying to hire for the sustainability coordinator position and we have been able to speak with HR. They were kind enough to share the hiring process with us. HR will tell you they are planning on making this hire, but what we want to emphasize tonight is that this hire needs to be treated as a serious position at the director level, similar to other district positions of importance. We want you to know that this position is something that students, staff, parents and our community truly care about and value. The sustainability coordinator is a position that is attempting to oversee the sustainability of thirty-three schools and over seventeen thousand students. This job is a huge undertaking and should be treated as such. If the district values sustainability and is willing to actually take action, we need to hire a coordinator of sustainability at a director level and look very carefully at how we classify this position so that they have the capacity and support to make real change. We have had a sustainability coordinator in the past, but currently we are not following our sustainability plan or staying on track to meet the goals of the plan. It is worth investing in this position at a level higher than we have been in the past and that recognizes the importance of this position long-term. We have gathered hundreds of signatures from community members saying that sustainability is something that they care about and they really want the district to prioritize. We will share this petition with you later tonight and we hope that it will show you that our concerns are shared with a larger community and that many people truly value sustainability in our district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Zoe. Appreciate it. Thank you so, so much. Vida Halpern, is that, I want to make sure I say that correctly. Is that correct? Okay, cool.
Good evening. My name is Vida Halpern and I am a junior at Bend High and a leader of the environmental club. I have been involved in environmental efforts since I joined Roots and Shoots Club in fourth grade at Highland Elementary School and I plan to be involved after I graduate from high school as well. The environment has always been very important to me and I think it is incredibly unfair how it is being treated, especially by people who won't live long enough to see the effects on future generations. The only way to fix this problem, however, is to start local. Therefore, we are urging you to take action. As the fifth largest school district in Oregon, it is our duty to set an example that other schools can follow. The sustainability plan for the district adopted in two thousand and twenty-one has several essential goals that would greatly improve sustainability efforts. However, many of these goals seem to have been forgotten or been pushed into the hands of green team leaders who don't have the capacity to lead weekly clubs as well as change the sustainability practices of an entire district. The objectives outlined in the sustainability plan should be more than just writing on a page. They should be actual goals that are achieved by the deadline that was set for them. Section twelve D of the sustainability plan for the district states that there will be reusable silver in all elementary schools and expand the program to middle schools by two thousand and twenty-five. There is less than a month left before two thousand and twenty-five ends. This is just one example of many things that we are not achieving. Last week, we met with several green team leaders from over six different schools with elementary, middle and high schools represented. They all emphasized the importance of support from the district in order to achieve sustainability practice across the schools. We are not alone in this concern, as you will see from the petition we will share with you. I urge you to take serious action about what we have shared tonight. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. Good job. And Simone?
Good evening. My name is Simone Halpern and I am a freshman at Bend High. Throughout middle and now high school, whenever I witnessed an inadequacy of environmental standards, I attempted to fix it with little or no administrative help. Each step of the way towards sustainability was littered with just as many challenges as successes, with the number of roadblocks preventing us from completing our goals. When I was eight years old, my grandfather told me it was my job to fix these issues that his generation, along with the generation before, had created. Somehow, even though the issue affects us all, it falls to us as students to fix the systemic problems within the district and the world that continually contribute to the environmental crisis. It is evident that there should be structured support for sustainability progress in the district and beyond if we ever have the hopes of mitigating the already drastic effects of climate change. It should not fall on us as students to spend our limited time outside of classes and extracurriculars to attempt to fix the inadequate institutions that continually pump carbon dioxide and waste into our environment. It should not be teachers' responsibility to wash dishes and organize composting, nor should elementary schoolers miss class because they are completing tasks that should be embedded within district policy. These structures must be put in place, along with an expectation for district support at all levels. Please stop behaving as if it is only the younger generation's problem to fix. By not hiring an adequate sustainability coordinator at a director level, the district is sending the message that sustainability isn't truly valued or prioritized. I am doing this now so students in the future do not have to. So that by the time they are my age, they do not need to change the institution because the systems are already in place. It is time for everyone, not just students, to take accountability. I ask you to address this issue as you would any other that threatens the safety of your students by investing in someone who will create long-lasting, meaningful and impactful change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Simone. Appreciate it very much. And finally, our last public speaker is going to be Michaela May?
Good evening. My name is Michaela May. I'm a junior at Caldera High School and the president of Caldera Green Team. I have been involved in environmental action since my freshman year of high school and I'm asking that you prioritize classifying the sustainability coordinator as a director-level job. All of the things that I have been able to accomplish with Caldera Green Team has been thanks to the previous sustainability coordinators with the school district. One such project was implementing compost in my school's kitchen. After months of work to implement the composting system, I, along with my fellow green team members, took times out of our lunch and our class time to empty the compost system. The amount of food I witnessed being wasted on a daily basis concerned me and I am happy to show you the photos that I took every time I emptied the compost as proof of this. I returned to school this year with new ideas for how to further reduce food waste in my school and in the district at large. Instead, I learned that there is no longer someone who holds the sustainability coordinator position and we are back to square one. This is just one example of what happens, the time and resources that are wasted when a sustainability coordinator does not have the support necessary to do their job. As the district tries to hire a new sustainability coordinator, I ask that you consider what a person in that position needs to effectively do their job. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I want to thank all the public speakers, students. I really appreciate all the information you gave us. Petition is this petition? Did you want to give us? Thank you so much. And I'll make sure I pass it over to everyone as well. And we'll make sure the directors who are all currently online get a copy of it as well and one who's not here also. Thank you all for all this hard work. Thank you so, so much. Appreciate it. Now go do your homework. Anyway, I'm just kidding. My daughter has to do hers too. I get it. And now, I will, oh, one of my favorite people in the world, Dr. Norquist. How we doing today? From the High Desert ESD for the annual ALO and Charter School Comprehensive Report. And for the two people in this end here, just hit the green button when you want to speak on the mic. The little green button's right there on the mic. Yeah, there you go.
Hi. While I know most of you well, for those of you I haven't met, I'm Lauren Norquist and I supervise ALO, not supervise, coordinate ALO programs for the High Desert ESD. If you're new, you may not know that it's both an Oregon law and part of your own district policy that all alternative programs are evaluated annually. And for Ben Lepine schools, that involves five different programs. We have Bend Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council and they have sites in both Lepine and Bend. And with me is Chris Schofield and Josh Legalo from COIC. We have the Heart of Oregon Corps. And I mentioned Heart of Oregon last year. They're new in being in contract with Ben Lepine schools and so they're going to present tonight. So you learn a little bit more about their program, programming. But I have Kara Johnson and Shelley Obi with me and we also have a student who will be speaking and we'll let Kara and Shelley introduce the student. We also have Jbar J youth programming and no one was able to be here from Jbar J. But if there are questions that come up, I may be able to address those. And then we have two charter schools that are in contract with Ben Lepine schools. We've already been able to hear from Ben International School. The other one is Desert Sky Montessori. And Heather Phillips, the director, is out on medical leave, but Megan Filio, who is the dean of students, is here and certainly can address any questions that you might have. My role is to complete the evaluations, but I spend most of my time providing support to the alternative programs. They're often little islands out in a giant sea and so it's nice sometimes to be able to connect with me or connect with each other. This year, we've put a big focus on making sure everyone has safety standards in place. And our charter schools were in very good shape about that. But working with the ALOs about training for staff, making sure all the different kind of drills that you should do are in place in those programs. So I am happy to report that all your contracted programs meet the standards of evaluation. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the Heart of Oregon team. Oh, and then we can have questions for any of the programs after Heart of Oregon finishes.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I'm Kara Johnson. I'm the deputy director at Heart of Oregon Corps. And tonight, we have, Heart of Oregon Corps has six programs, but tonight I'm really going to focus on our Youth Build program. So, who attends Youth Build? The young people are sixteen to twenty-four years old and they come from all six Central Oregon districts. The students are typically behind on credits, they're disengaged from school or they're seeking a new career pathway. What we offer the young people are academic supports, diploma, GEDs and credit recovery. But we also offer them job training. We're also a fully registered pre-apprenticeship program in construction and we also offer a career track in child and youth development. Our, we, the young people also do community service and leadership projects as well as part of the curriculum. What is unique about Youth Build? We are, like I said, we're a pre-apprenticeship. We have built the pipeline to union jobs, good-paying union jobs for our young people in the, in the construction trades. We also offer career counseling and mentorship, not from, not just from our staff, but we also bring in vetted volunteers from our community to offer our mentoring program, through our mentoring program. We offer our young people wraparound services, barrier support, goal setting and mental health resources. But we also are able to pay our young people. They earn a stipend coming to program when they are doing construction or in their, in doing their work experience in child and youth development or when they're in the classroom, they're earning that stipend. They also, like I said, they do leadership and community service. Since two thousand and nine, since our Youth Build program was started here in Central Oregon, our young people have built over forty affordable housing units throughout the entire Central Oregon. So our young people are able to go see those houses and say to their family, "I built that house" and be proud and confident about their skills. Now, we have some real outcomes to share with you. From two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-five, we served ninety-two young people from all of the districts. We all, throughout those, young people, seventy-nine of them earned their high school diploma or GED. Two hundred and twenty-six industry-recognized credentials were earned through NCCR, OSHA-ten, CPR, first aid, also through our Child and Youth Care Certification Board for our early childhood programming. How are we aligned with the district? We support graduation for your young people and your students here in Ben Lepine School District. Also, credit recovery. So our young people are coming into our program and they're getting their credits, they need to get back on track and then we, they go back to their, their home high school and graduate from their home high school. We also provide the career and technical education pathways. We develop the social, emotional skills, the confidence and the leadership from our, with our young people. So what we're looking for is we need referrals for students to come to the Youth Build program. We also will be partnering on projects and work sites here in Bend, in Redmond, so the young people can actually have those work sites to build on, those homes. And we know what? We want you to become an advocate for our program and Heart of Oregon Corps and our Youth Build program. So, the most important person here to speak, I'd like to introduce to you all, is Brody Ecclestone.
My name is Brody Ecclestone. I am sixteen. I am from the Heart of Oregon Corps Youth Build. I really enjoy Youth Build because it helps with my education I really enjoy Youth Build because it helps with my education and earn more credits quickly and easier than a normal school. I enjoy the program, and it's small, and it's a, it's a small school with small classes, so students and teachers are closer. So it's like a more one-on-one than just by yourself. In the past, I felt alone in a big class, not getting the help I deserve or need. At Youth Build, I sit in a small classroom with 15 people, and I feel like I actually get the help that I need to learn. The second half of Youth Build is where you get to learn job skills, like construction. I've learned a lot of hard skills required to work in a trade. I have also learned to use a variety of tools, and how to use them safely, and how to make things, like how to build houses. I've also experienced a, the gratification of improving my work ethic. We actually get to go into the community and help people and learn more about construction. Students who feel overwhelmed by normal school settings, or who are more hands-on and adventurous, are ideal for Youth Build. I recommend Youth Build for a lot of people in my life because I see it, I see how it can help a lot, like, a lot. Just like a lot in the long run, and showing them their path.
We had another student speaker, Teresa, who was unfortunately sick tonight, so she asked that I read out her speech for her. Ever wonder what it feels like to find a place that truly meets you where you are and helps you become who you're meant to be? For me, that place is Youth Build. Hi, I'm Teresa. I'm 17 years old, a high school senior, and I want to share a bit about my experience with Youth Build. It's not just one path, it's a network of pathways designed to help us gain vital job skills while together reaching that goal of earning a high school diploma or a GED. When I arrived, I was looking for direction, and I found a structured environment that challenged me to grow in ways that I hadn't imagined yet. The opportunities that I had gained by earning almost all of my credits through online classes and GEDs certification, and earning certifications have been a highlight for me. I am proud to say that I've earned my Child and Youth Care Foundation certificate, a field where I've already gained valuable experience through volunteering in the community. I am pursuing my OSHA-10 certification in the construction wing, and the amount I learned from practical skills to soft skills like teamwork and resilience in such a short amount of time is outstanding. The hands-on experience and support, and supportive community have prepared me for my next steps after graduation and more. To anyone feeling stuck or looking for a change, I wholeheartedly recommend Youth Build. Thank you.
Students as well?
Yeah. Marcus, I wanted to address the Youth Build. I'm really pleased to hear about programs like this that provide these hands-on skills. Just a question about some of the programs. Do you have any articulations with any community colleges where they can get college credit and encourage them to move on to a college degree?
Yes, we do. We work with COCC. Matter of fact, I had a meeting with them today. And so we've already crosswalked our Child and Youth Care Foundation's course with them, and so right now, our young people can get credit for prior learning, for completion of the course with us, and that, they can earn up to 15 credits. And we are going to be crosswalking our NCCR credential with them for construction, and also for one of our other programs, our, one of our Conservation Corps programming, which is outside of Youth Build, we're going to be crosswalking fire science as well. So we have many of those opportunities, and COCC has been wonderful to work with to crosswalk that and to make it affordable for our young people. So those credit for prior learning, each class is only $40, and where in Youth Build, we can actually pay for that class, for the, or those classes for those young people through our supportive services, and pay for their application fee if needed as well.
That's excellent. Thank you.
Can you just show questions?
I'm curious, how do you get the word out? I, I see with age range, I mean, two different populations, 16 to 18, do all the high schools throughout Central Oregon know about you? Is it counselors, is it teachers, administrators, and then how do you, how do you get the word out for 18 to 24?
I'd like to address that if I could. One of the things that I'd like to compliment all the Central Oregon districts on is, as in their work with alternative programming, if we go back a decade or longer, it was often pretty random. A counselor, assistant principal, you know, I think you'd be better off at COIC. You know, you might want to try Oregon Youth Challenge. Our districts around the region have really worked to put processes in place that it's carefully done, and, and it's not random. Where, and Sean Reinhardt and I have been in conversation about this, I think potential for growth here is that there are clear key people in each of our Central Oregon districts that everyone knows. The counselors know, you know, the alternative programs know, that here's the key person, and that person knows, oh, COIC can do this. Oh, Oregon Youth Challenge Program can do this. Oh, Heart of Oregon can do this. So, you know, Sean and I were talking, because Eric Powell, I think, in this district plays that role, but I said, I don't think anyone else, I don't even think anyone in our own high schools, or everyone knows that. And so really improving that communication. The second thing, one potential group of students that is really getting not the attention they deserve are students that have essentially aged out of our high schools. They're 18, they're 19, 20 years old. Districts are still allowed to claim those students for ADM, but they're often too old to be appropriately placed in neighborhood high schools. Well, both Heart of Oregon and COIC willingly, openly want those students. So even working on making sure that we, and because they're contracted partners, the district can share educational information, name and contact information. Here are the kids who didn't graduate. Here's a list, Heart of Oregon, here's a list, COIC. They'll do the outreach, but, but making sure we have streamlined ways to, to get those services and connect with each other, I think would go a long way. We know that in the nation, we have 10% of our youth between 16 and 24 are doing nothing. They're not working, they're not going to school, and these are programs that can really, really serve those students. So keeping those close connections going, I think, is really important.
Thank you, that helps.
Director Lynch, I knew you had a question.
Yeah, I have a question for Dr. Norquist before you go.
Oh, sure.
I know that part of your responsibility is making sure that the, at least the charters are completing assessments, state assessments in the same way. And it looks like Desert Sky, and you, you know, marked both of those as having done so.
Right.
The Bend International School participation, particularly in English, has fallen pretty significantly over the last three years, like, and it was great that they showed academic improvement, but, you know, at the same time, it was like 10% fewer kids taking the test. Is there some threshold at which you sort of say, like, okay, you know, I need you to get your assessment participation sort of at the level of the typical district schools? Or, like, how do you sort of assess, like, if that, you know, is really being fulfilled?
I'm very confident that both those schools fall well within the range of typical levels of participation of the district schools. I'm looking to Dr. Burke for confirmation, but we, even if you look among the elementary schools in Bend-Lapine, there's a wide range in participation levels. We live in a state that not only allows people to opt, their students, out of statewide assessments, but we have to notify them twice a year that they can opt out, and I, I think that's a significant problem around the state. I do know that both the leadership at Bend International School and Desert Sky Montessori really do actively encourage taking the assessments because they believe it's really important that they have an external auditing function for their programming. It's a great point, and, and I think it's a challenge.
I'll just add quickly that this is not unique to, to these programs, but I think we generally in Bend-Lapine can do a better job about, sort of talking about why taking assessments would be appropriate and supportive of things that we would like to do moving forward. So we just had a conversation today about what does that look like? How do we, how do we help people understand that those, those outcomes matter for our district broadly?
And I imagine, too, like, this, this is an opportunity to see what's happening in two very specific schools, you know, like, we, I don't know if there's a similar process that we use for our other schools, but, you know, not to put you on the hot seat, but like, this is a, this is a process we go through in which you certify, like, yes, it's happening, right? And, you know, and so it gives us an opportunity to look at the numbers and say, like, well, it's happening, but it's, it's not doing amazing, and, you know, what can we do to sort of intervene and make sure that that stays on track?
Yeah, I, I had a similar question. I remember, I think, when you were presenting last year, I remember looking at Desert Sky Montessori results, and they were significant, I thought they were significantly lower. And I think, I just remember walking away being like, is it one of these situations where, like, you know, you're trying to put, whatever it's called, the, like, a peg-in-a-square thing, right? Like, and so, yeah, I'm curi, and you could, and we can, like, take this offline?
Director Chadwick, I know that Megan Filio, who's here from Desert Sky, is, you know, I had sent her some, some of the questions that came up from the board.
Okay.
She's prepared to.
Oh, great, okay.
Address that.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Megan Filio, and I'm the dean of students at Desert Sky. So, yeah. I think specifically, we have been very focused this year. I've been with the, the school for a year and a half now, so I joined them at the beginning of last year. And we've, we are very focused on data, and so really using assessment as, as the tool for capturing information about whether students are acquiring the learning and internalizing what teachers are instructing. It wasn't something that was as prevalent prior to my joining the staff. It was something that we've been able to articulate to our teachers the importance of it, and so now we do a six-week cyclical process. We have a PLC process as well, analyzing the data to ensure that we are providing intervention and reteaching and, and knowledgeable of, of student progress. We've been able to also pivot from easy CBM, using that as our baseline assessment. So we do a beginning, middle, and, and end-of-the-year assessment, and we're using the iReady assessment now because we feel like it aligns more with the Common Core standards that, that we know are presented within the Montessori curriculum and, and process of instruction, but we need to be more explicit. I think one area that, that we have discovered, especially this year, implementing the iReady assessment, teachers have recognized a language gap. And so the language of instruction in math that's used in the Montessori curriculum is completely different. So for instance, in, in Common Core language, we say ones and tens, and in, in the Montessori curriculum, it's called, a one is called a unit, and so kids need to have that explicit instruction, and they're getting that explicit instruction to bridge the, the, the language and vocabulary gap that we've, we've been able to identify. So I think, I, I think the process of really trying to seek out other Montessori schools in the country that have a similar demographic and a similar experience has been really enriching for us. We were able to find a school in Texas that is a Montessori-based public charter school as well, very similar to our school, and they have created and, and crosswalked all of the learning standards to the Montessori standards and created a scope and sequence. And so our teachers are using that scope and sequence, and we're using that as the basis for the six-week assessment on math standards. So we're really tackling it and trying to own our data and own what our students are presenting in, in, in their performance.
I'll just add as well that this is where a role like Dr. Norquist is really important because to, to be able to have touchpoints across these programs that, as she said, kind of often feel like in isolation or sort of out, outdoing their own thing. In this case, Desert Sky was a place that recognized this is an, an area that we need to grow in, it's an acute area of growth that we need to make changes for, and they're very interested in moving forward in that. Well, at, at a first kind of blush at how they were going to address that included things that were like, trying, basically doing everything under the sun. And so Laura was able to say, okay, well, that's awesome, and what is, maybe we compare that down, like, maybe there are some things that we can dive into that feel like, like chunks that we can actually accomplish. And, and that has been, I think, a great partnership to sort of help kind of frame that and, and help them connect with, with like resources around to kind of make some moves there that could be sticky for a long time.
Thank you. Yeah, and I, forever ago, wanted to be a Montessori teacher when I moved out west, and I've heard wonderful things about Desert Sky, and like I was saying, that was kind of my, I don't want us to be spending time, like, training kids to ace a test, right? Like, that's not what we want. And this context is, confirms, I guess, my hypothesis, and thank you for providing that background.
Yeah.
Cool, thank you. I have two questions really quick. One, how is the new facility? Don't you're building a new facility?
Oh, our new facility?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're building a new facility in Redmond, 6,000-square-foot building, and we also are doing a little bit remodeling of our training center as well, and it's on time. It's actually a week early right now because the weather's been great, and it'll be, we should be opening up in June and have our, in September, we have actually, our dedication's going to be September 30th, so be expecting that invitation to come see the brand-new building.
No worries. I was supposed to come see the facility. I was sick, so I couldn't come see you, so I'm looking forward to that. My question also is related to you and COIC. Two things, are the students working as a combo of going to school and coming to Heart of Oregon or COIC, or they're just filling full times there? Those are one of the other things. And also, are these credits elective credits, or are they actual general's subject credits as well that can be obtained as well? Yep, yep.
I can answer for Heart of Oregon really quick. So we have a combination of the two. So the young people come full days to our program, about seven hours, and we do one week in construction, and then they alternate the opposite week into education. And we're doing core, GEDs, and electives, all of them. So we do a direct instruction, we do GED testing and prepping them for that, but we also do, we have a, a class called Affordable Housing, where we're actually incorporating the construction piece and what they're building into Language Arts and Social Studies. So a very hands-on class that the young people can see the, what they're, it's like they're learning about affordable housing and the impacts that it's happening in Central Oregon to actually building that affordable housing and being able to refer back and forth. We also do, like, green building construction, science course as well. Those are just a couple examples of the direct instruction that we also do.
Yeah, good evening, and I would like to address that, too. I'm Chris Schofield, Youth Education Manager at COIC. And as far as the shape of the day for our COIC students, we offer a flexible program, but we have classes in session from 8:45 till about 3:30 in the afternoon, and our students are allowed to fit their schedule around their needs for work and parenting and anything else in their life, but we prefer to have them there from about 8:35 until 3:30 with a lunch break. And we offer some elective credits, but most of our students come to us for credit recovery. They are all referred by their home high school. That's the only way we get students, is those that are sent to us by their home high school. And we offer GED preparation and testing. We're a certified Pearson View test site, and we also offer credit recovery in a variety of subjects. And those GED tests are most commonly turned into credits in exchange by the school district and applied to diplomas in their home school. We do not issue diplomas at COIC. We only issue credits.
Right, directors, any additional questions?
I have one more question, and this goes back to Montessori, with the, the improvement in attendance, and I'm just curious how, what, what was the challenge with the attendance, and how did you? and how did you improve it so significantly over the last few years? I mean, particularly elementary focus, I think is kind of, is different than secondary, and I'm just curious of what you, what you did or noticed.
I thi-, I think, I, I, like I was saying, I've been there for a year and a half now, but I think what I've noticed has increased our attendance is the connection between teacher and, and student. That relationship is the foundation that teachers are really working to develop, and, and they, students stay with their teacher for three years. And so that multi-age classroom where the teacher is building a bond and, and rapport with family really goes a long way. And I, I think teachers are really working to, to know students intimately, especially if they're gonna be, you know, with that child for three years. And really trying to develop the interests and work from a, a child's strengths. And, and so I think students, they feel seen and they feel heard and valued in the classroom. I think the small classroom size has really helped a lot. And, and, and there's a lot of project-based learning that goes on. I think students can express an interest and their teachers will go the extra mile to, to help develop and allow that, that interest to be expressed in the classroom. There's a, a lot of cooking and research projects, and, you know, we're, we're blessed to have a kitchen that kids can cook in, and we have a really robust garden, and so, and just a beautiful campus that's very nature-based. And so I, I think collectively, you know, students, they ju-, they enjoy coming to school.
It's quite of an improvement, so.
Yeah, thanks for explaining that.
Uh, just before you leave, do you, do you guys have AMS membership or certification, and what, what sort of Montessori training is typical?
Most of our, yes, we do have AMS certification, and most of our teachers have gone through, I, I'm not as well-versed on, on that, Heather would be well, well more equipped than I am to speak to it, but our teachers have gone through a program, usually through a program in Portland and.
Montessori Northwest.
Yep, yep. So kind of a combination, yeah. I'm sorry, I don't know much, as much as about that as I probably should.
No worries. Students, questions? Okay, cool, no worries. Thank you all for your report, appreciate it very, very much, thank you for your time. And I want to thank you for the report, and now we'll move on to our consent agenda. Is there any discussion regarding our document and consent agendas, Directors? Since there's no questions, I would now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion from Director Tomlin, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Director Fisher, any discussion on this proposed motion? All right, since there's no ques-, oh, I'm sorry, since there's no question.
I just had a quick question.
Oh, yeah, go.
About the reassignment of building administrators, deletion, is it, is that okay if I ask permission on that?
Yeah. It's not yet, that's later.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, excuse me.
That's the next thing, that's the next thing, no worries. Okay, back to the motion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I, I think we have the ayes online as well, all opposed, any abstentions? All right, thank you very, very much. And now we're getting ready to get to our next thing.
Sorry, I totally jumped ahead.
It's all good. Consent for information, Dr. Cook.
Yes, thank you Chair Legrand. Just as a reminder, part of our process is to do our best to circle back to questions that board members may ask, or, or even students in some regards, where we need to go back and collect some data, and we try to follow that up in the, the following month, and we're gonna continue to work on those processes to try to do a better job of making sure that's accessible for the community, for students, and for all board members as we move forward. So look, we're, we're talking about some other modifications that we think we can do to be a little more efficient with that. You will see in this document, in the, or, excuse me, in this section of the board agenda that there are several of those questions that were followed up again this month in case some of them were missed, and some new items that were added as well. Additionally, the annual report, as you know, for our executive limitations, we're expected to give reports on all of the ELs. This month you will receive the executive limitation 4.6 on child nutrition, which is also included in there. And then now for policies that we are having updated on, we have four of them in this agenda item. The first is CCC AA, which is regarding the reassignment of building administrators. We are deleting that as that language was incorporated into the updated GCI-dGDP AP, Assignment and Transfers. The second one is CEA-AP, it's a new policy that aligns with Senate Bill 731. This requires school districts to create educational equity advisory committees. If you remember, that goes all the way back to years ago for all the large districts. Over 10,000 students had to start the Equity Coalition Committees, that's what we have chosen to call ours. We actually predated that expectation, and the Equity Coalition existed prior to that. Senate Bill 731 required that all districts meet those criteria, and so we aligned the policy to make sure that it matched. The assessment program has been renamed from a regulation to a policy and updated to align with the current district practice, as well as the requirement that we have been established by Senate Bill 602. That makes the students' choice of opting out of those assumptive assessments that we just talked about, allows them the opportunity to do that permanently. Lastly, JEC-AP, admissions has a grammatical correction that just removed duplicative language. Glad to answer any questions. Director Fisher?
No, I can go dig and look at the updated, sorry. I'm good.
Any other Directors, any questions? Online? All right, thank you, Dr. Cook, appreciate it. And now I think I would turn it over to Steve Herring on our internal reports.
Let's see, has the clicker disappeared? Thank you very much, Chair, and Board members. My name is Steve Herring, and I'm the Chief Human Resources Officer for Ben Lepine Schools, and I appreciate the opportunity to address all y'all. I do want to apologize in advance, I am fighting a bit of a bug, was out yesterday, and, and some of my voice is a little bit gravelly and raspy, and I'm gonna do my best to, to speak as loudly as I can and close to the microphone, and just let me know if there's anything that, that I say that you don't hear and need me to go back to. If, if the, there we go, if we can get that staffing report, I want to take just a very quick moment to frame how we've come to be where we're at and what we're doing to improve this conversation, this presentation. When I first arrived at Ben Lepine Schools, I was asked to present a staffing report, and that was predominantly a demographic and a hiring trend report. And in the first year I presented that, there were quite a bit of questions. For example, we didn't have information about the, the relative di-, uh, diversity of staff to students, so I was asked if I could include that in the next year's presentation. So there were some iterations, came back the following year and, and presented with the, the iterative work. The third year, did that staffing report, and then in the spring, was asked to come back in and present a, a presentation on specifically some stuff going on with HR and several other administrative groups. And so there was, I don't know, eight of us that sat up here and kind of talked about where we were going with things, and, and I talked about HR as it fit into that particular spring presentation. The year following that, which was last year, I was asked to take those two bodies of information and put them into a single presentation, which we brought to you in December. And so this year reflects that same model. I do want to recognize, however, that I think the sorts of things that the board is interested in hearing about from Human Resources may well have evolved over the course of the five years. And so I've done my best to try to identify some areas that I think you're interested in. I may have hit the target in part, missed the target in part, very open, receptive to feedback on how we can come back in next year with information you're more interested in. Because as the board has evolved and as the membership of the board has changed, then of course the things that you have an interest in being updated on undoubtedly has evolved. So I want to start out with that acknowledgement kind of of the history of this particular presentation, and why the information may satisfy you completely, may satisfy you in part, or may dissatisfy you completely, and we'll, we'll do our best to learn. I'm gonna try to get the right button there. Is this, do I have the, is that the clicker? Oh, it did do something. All right. This is a summary of all of the points of EL 4.2. And I know that there's been some work done on the board's ELs, and, and I just want to have a conversation about the fact that we may want to have some further work on EL 4.2. For example, one of the bullet points you'll see, hit the fourth one down, is prepare staff to deal with emergency situations. That's a kind of a peculiar item to be in the HR EL. And then, number three, provide ongoing professional development. The interesting thing is, we, our model is that we've divided instructional professional development and operational professional development, if you will. So for example, I meet with administrators and talk to them about how to, how to manage in a union environment. I talk to them about how to administer contracts. I talk to them about how to not violate the Public Employee Collective Bargaining Law. But I'm not directly involved in their professional development as relates to instructional improvement. So there's a few things here that are a little bit peculiar how they've been framed. I think they, it's pretty, the artifacts are pretty old, like, in other words, I'm, I'm not, I don't think anyone in this room probably had to do it, the original drafting of that. But I just want to recognize there is a, a large body of information, and I'm not going to address most of it tonight, to be perfectly blunt. What I am gonna address, I'm gonna hit on those staffing levels, demographics, and hiring trends, until you tell me not to. We're gonna talk a little about, about workforce relations and labor relations, particularly we're gonna talk, then, then we're gonna shift into a little bit about what HR's been doing. We're gonna talk about posting and hiring and onboarding, evaluation processes, I'm gonna give a quick update on bargaining, since the second to last one there is invite board participation in labor negotiations and just let you know where we're at in, in the cycle. I'm gonna talk about classification compensation project, that's kind of a big one, and I think that hearing, you hearing what we've been doing around that has some value. And then we're gonna talk a little bit about risk management, which has been absorbed by, by Human Resources, and we're doing some proactive work on that. And then lastly, I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about the ERP, the Enterprise Resource Planning, things that we're working on. Oh, that went too far. Okay. Oh, anyway. I'm not feeling the best, and so, in advance on the slide, but not on my laptop, and that's because the laptop's not what's up there, I apologize. So staffing levels and demographics. This is our employee snapshot, we have just under 2,100 employees, just over 1,000 of them are teacher, teacher ranks, certified ranks, just under 1,000 of them are classified, we have 133, this is by the way, a snapshot, so if we were to take it a month sooner or a month later, it could be a few, you know, numbered, few people different. We have roughly 133 administrators, we have roughly 19 confidential employees. Our demographic data by sex, and on the, the far right is 2025, so our workforce is 31.5% male, 68.2% female, and 0.3% non-binary. And over the course of the, the years that I've been doing this presentation, what we've tried to do is, is keep all the data on a slide so that we can see the, the, the progression over time. And over the course of time, and, and the inclusion of non-binary only started in 2023, so really if we look from 2023 forward, you can see we dropped about a percentage point in male, increased about a percentage point in female, and have hovered just under a half percentage point for folks that identify as non-binary. As to race and ethnicity, again, down the far right is the 2025 numbers, and we reflect just under 89% white, just over 6.5% Latinx, just under 1% black, and about 3.5% of folks who identify as other than white, but other than black or Hispanic. I think the, the thing that's worth looking at here is the trend. We have trended towards diversity. Our 2018 numbers were that we showed 93.5% white, and that has decreased, our Latinx number has increased by 2.5%, and our other people of color have shown an increase, although not enormous numbers. The demographic data by employee group, so you see the 31.5 and the 16.2 and the 0.3 across there for all, and the 88.9, 66.9, and 3.6, that's the data we just looked at. Then it breaks it out, BEA is our classified, excuse me, our certified labor representative, and that group is heavily weighted towards female. And OSEA is our classified, and that group is weighted towards a female as well, although a little less so than the, the teaching, the licensed staff. The admin is very, very close to 50/50, and the confidential is overwhelmingly a female. With essentially the, the same representation in BEA and OSEA of non-binary as we see in the general pop-, in the population whole. In relation to race, we have a slightly less diverse group in our teaching ranks, and in our administrative staff, we have a, a slightly more diverse group in our classified ranks. And so that, I think, is reflective of the Latinx population in our classified ranks is probably where, where that disparity from work groups shows up most. Administrative staffing by sex was one of the things that I was asked about in that first year that I presented, because at that point in time, there was a pretty distinct disparity of favoring men in the administrative ranks. We were near 60%, well, at 20, in 2020, which is before my arrival, but at 20, in 2020, we were over 60% male and, and under 40% female in administrative ranks. And in 2022, we were still pretty close to those numbers. Over the course of the next several years, that has balanced closer to 50/50, and so we're, we're very close to right at 50/50. Last year, we were at 48.8% male, 51.2% female, this year we're at 50.4% male, 49.6% female. So it's one of those things where a couple of folks will tip it by those quantities, but we're very, very close to 50/50 in representation by sex in administration. The comparative data, racial and ethnic demographic data, students to staff show that we still do not reflect the disparity of, or, excuse me, the, the diversity of our student body. Our student body is roughly 78% white, 14% Latinx, 1% black, 7% who identify as non-white but other than a Latinx and black, and, or Hispanic and black. And whereas our staff obviously is about a 10% higher representation in white folks in our staff, and almost 10%, just under 10% lower in our Latinx population and in our other than a black or ethnically Hispanic.
Mr. Herring, can I, can I ask a quick question?
You're back.
I know you're not feeling well, and I want to definitely try to be respectful of that, if you would love to speed up just a smidgen so we can get to a certain point situation. If you would love to speed up this a smidgen so we can get to a certain point situation to hit. Because I think the directors have some questions, what to ask, because I want to be respectful of your health. Because I want to make sure that you're feeling well, to be able to get home, be able to do what you need to do. So I'm just trying to be really respectful of that. So if you want to.
I'll move quick, more quickly.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
So the next item is hiring trends and that's the staff data. Again, this is the year over change from last year. A slight increase in total staffing, ever so slight in certified, classified and administrative. So pretty, pretty, pretty close to static, but this is the one that, that probably within the hiring trend data is the most useful insofar as, one of the questions that was put to me was about retention. And the difficulty is we don't have a good, as you know, I've talked about it at some length. We don't have a good infrastructural tool right now for our HR data. And so tracking some of the things that we would like to track is very difficult and manual. What this is, is this is our hiring actions outside the organization, which is our best proxy for turnover. Right? It's the best way of trying to estimate what turnover looks like from the positions that we've had to hire from outside of the organization. So the hiring, the regular hiring actions, you can see have decreased over the last five years from twelve, twelve hundred down to just about six, six hundred and fifty, just over six hundred and fifty over the course of five years. So that was a decrease of thirteen point three percent. And then a decrease of twenty five percent, a decrease of fifteen percent between last year and this year, pretty, pretty stable, pretty close, pretty similar number. Here's what we don't have any idea. We don't have any idea why that has done that. We don't know if that is somehow related to the pandemic and the effects of staffing related to the, to the pandemic. We, we don't know if at the time of the pandemic and immediately following it, we had a pretty substantial exodus. And so we had a, a higher than normal rate of hiring that has slowly trickled down. I think when we follow this over a few more years, we'll see if it stays relatively steady where it's at. And if so, that would suggest that, that the twenty twenty one and twenty one, twenty two numbers are an artifact related to pandemic hiring, pandemic departure and pandemic hiring. But I think we need a couple more years of data before we can really get a sense of whether we're at a stabilized place. The other percentages, that represents a, what percentage of total staffing? So for example, two hundred and forty eight total hires out of our total staff is about twelve percent. So that reflects there having been about a twelve percent turnover in the organization. And then we do not have the data right now, although we're working on a tool to be able to collect that data and report it. We don't have the data to reflect what of that is retirements versus resignations versus departures for some other reason. For example, performance or, or misconduct related departure. You can see the highest, the, the highest area of return over is in our classified staff. If we're using this as a proxy for turnover, is in our turnover staff. That was hovering around thirty or forty percent. It's down to about last year, twenty five, and then this year, twenty. So that does seem to be coming down in terms of the amount of turnover there. But when we look at our teaching ranks, for example, over the last three years, high degree of stability there, less than ten percent turnover in that particular group of people. In relation to workforce relations and, and labor relations. I presented last time on our philosophy and relationships, so I'm not going to go into that in detail. But I want you to understand that that continues to be an area of emphasis. And I want to relate, I want to share a little bit about posting, hiring, onboarding, evaluation processes and bargaining. I want to take a step back and just make this general statement. When, when, when I arrived at the district, I would describe the district's processes, HR processes as not being modern processes, as requiring quite a bit of review and, 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 and improvement. And so some of these things look like very small or very minor or very, things that you would expect already to be going on. But they represent progress for, for our, for our system. So for example, there have never been metrics for vacancy posting or for hiring. We currently have now metrics for vacancy posting. So the vacancy posting process goes, goes review by HR, review by budget, review by CFO post. And we follow the metrics of the length of time it takes at each of those stops before it gets posted. We're in the process of developing metrics for the entire hiring process. Right now, the first place we started was the request to vacancy, or request to post period of time. We have process improvements that we are undertaking largely around systemization. I mean, that, that's, the, the modernization is largely around systemization of things from initial notification, call to the background check, to the offer and communication where things are at in the process. These are things that haven't had system, systematization to them. And, and so we're developing those as processes that get followed each and every time. The establishment of new hiring orientation, we didn't have a new hiring orientation process at the district. Our goal is that folks walk out confident and connected. So they have presentations from payroll, benefits, policy and advocacy, their labor associations. They have presentations from the district office for the first half of the day. They get job specific training for the second half of the day. That new hire orientation process is, didn't exist previously and has been established. And it may seem relatively minor, but, but it is something that was important, necessary. And, and some of the things that we're doing are, are starting from very embryonic levels. In relation to evaluation, we've done some process and structure improvements. It's as simple as it sounds, some checklists and some schedules for processes that the organization didn't have. Some improved forms and analogs around the blast evaluation tool. We went in, in collaboration with the deputy superintendent and revised some content, predominantly assisting administrator evaluators in drilling down in the existing areas being evaluated. We streamlined some documentation. Certified evaluation tool will be undertaking review after the first of the year. In relation to bargaining, we have, we had reopen our negotiations and settled financial terms for twenty five, twenty six, twenty six, twenty seven. And the parties had the right to bring two language items each. And I've briefed the board at the time we, we adopted those. That, one of the questions that I received related to, in, in relation to the, the EL four limiting financial obligations to projected revenues and, and, and what our compensation and benefits obligations through into the current CBAs looked like relative to our estimated revenues. And when I called Dan Emerson to talk about that, he said, well, that's a forty five minute conversation by itself. So it's a, it's a really complicated conversation. We're absolutely happy to step into it with you. I'm not prepared to be able to respond to it tonight, but we absolutely invite that question and are happy to, to step into the conversation and, and work our ways through it. The other thing I do want folks to know about bargaining, however, is that interim negotiations and contract enforcement, like grievance hearings are part of the bargaining process, the ongoing bargaining process. And so we had interim negotiations around sped issues, around virtual instruction, around Medicaid billing. And so we continue to have interim negotiations on an ongoing basis. Successor negotiations will obviously be undertaken prior to the expiration of the contract in June of twenty seven. So that will probably commence in winter of twenty six with the preparation work and, and the bargaining in spring of twenty seven. And we will once again look for board representation on that, on that bargaining team. Classification and compensation project, this was an area that the organization was very unsophisticated around classification and compensation. I just got to tell you, it absolutely warmed the cockles of my heart to hear our friends from the green team group making a pitch to the board about what the appropriate classification should be for the particular vacancy. The fact they took an interest in that, reached out to HR. I was extraordinarily happy to hear that HR welcomed them and, and gave them the information they were looking for and, and worked with them. And it was delightful to hear that they have an interest in something like what's the right classification. It's, it's a complicated answer and, and I'm happy to have conversations with those kiddos about what is the right classification and why. But I was absolutely delighted because to be perfectly frank with you, I think there's a lot of adults that don't have any idea what they're talking about when they talk about what's the right classification. So in relation to classification, systemization of our classification, our reclassification processes, compensation and market adjustment processes. And then actually doing the work with our classification structures, including developing a comparative model have been some of the work we've done. The, the contracts and the way the district addressed classification was just, we didn't distinguish between classification and position. We just called everything a job type. And we stepped into bargaining with our classified group and started talking about what's a classification? What's a, what's a position? How are they distinct? Why is job type insufficient? What happens if there is a layoff and you have a whole bunch of people who are in a bazillion job types? What, how does, how do we, how do we look at what are common positions? And I mean, if you've got seniority, but you're the only person in that job type or one of only a handful in that job type, what does seniority mean? And so we had a lengthy conversation with them about classification. They understood that we were not trying to trick them or pull one over on them. But that frankly, the, the, the reorganization of the classifications was to the advantage of their folks if we ever found ourselves in a situation where seniority was going to be important. And so we did the conversion from, from job type to classification and position. We built classification nomenclature, a functional area, nature of work, level of work. That's where the conversation about what is a director, what, what does a director do? How is a director different than a coordinator? What besides director and coordinator are the right classification, right options in, in the nomenclature? In relation to the work we've actually done, EA is kind of the poster child I bring up. And when I arrived, we had thirteen different EA classifications. None of them were based on the nature of the work. They were based on where the, the, the positions were at. And they were on six different pay ranges. And that was obviously not an appropriate structure. We identified three of those thirteen weren't even EAs. They weren't even providing assistance to kids in classrooms. And so those were pulled out of that group and we got those classified properly. Of the remaining ten, we distilled those down. And I want to particularly recognize Sean Reinhardt for his work on this because it was central. We, we distilled that down, Sean distilled that down with us to three classifications. We now have three EA classifications on, each on one pay range, which is the way it should be. We currently have a classification name of a secretary, which is similar to how EA used to be. So we're undertaking that. What of this work is reception? What of this work is executive assistance? What of this work is other than either of those? So we're undertaking that. Our IT work, we have a classification called IT engineer that does about eight different types of work that, that if you had a circumstance where one of those people left, you couldn't have one of the other people step into that, into that role. So this is the sort of stuff that we're, we're trying to get straightened out. And it's very fundamental stuff, but we had to build the processes and now we're doing the work with those processes to correct things. You're not going to be able to read this. I didn't intend for you to be able to read it. But I want you to be able to see what we're doing. We wanted our compensation analysis to be objective and to be data driven. So we built, oh my goodness, I have no idea what I just did. I just touched some part of this button that changed the look of that. Oh, they zoomed it. Okay. I was like, man, I have no idea what I just did. But the, the, the point of my, including this is just to show you, this tool didn't exist here. When I asked, hey, how did we come up with that particular number? It would oftentimes be, well, we called around a few places. Well, who did you call? And sometimes I could be told, sometimes I couldn't be told. Sometimes it was very, very subjective and anecdotally driven. And we're trying to move away from that to replicable results. So we have a model that we use where we, we look at the, the large ten districts or nine of the large ten, we're, we're the tenth of the ten. So nine of the large ten, three that are bigger than us, three that are right at us, three that are smaller than us. And then we also look at the central Oregon districts. Anytime we're doing a, a compensation comparison. All this to say, this is, these are the sorts of ways that we've been systematizing the processes. All right, I, now I can't seem to get it to move forward. There we go. Risk management. A lot of our risk management strategy was in our CFO's mind. And so one of the things that we've done is we have tried to create a higher awareness profile, a higher and more deliberate strategic approach and to emphasize proactivity in risk. So we've actually, risk is one of those things that can be located with finance, it can be located with HR, it can be located with facilities. Because you've got risk issues in each of those places. And so we've chosen to locate it in HR. Don't know if that's the right place or if it should stay there, but that's where it's at right now. And in relation to proactivity, I wanted to talk about some of the things we're doing. For example, walkthroughs with the PACE risk management consultant. We did CT classroom walkthroughs, we did lab walkthroughs, we did some of the fine arts classroom, like ceramics walkthroughs. All the high school campuses have been completed, scheduling the middle school campuses now. We addressed with severe, moderate and advisory scale. For example, at Mountview High School, and, and this is the, I only use them because they're the one that I have the list, I don't have the other list. There's thirty one ranging from very serious to not very serious. Something could be as simple as in the chemistry lab, it doesn't look like the eye rinse is being flushed regularly. And you need to do that to make sure you don't have bacterial growth in the plumbing. Okay, so we need to make sure that we've brought that to the building safety committee and that they've delegated somebody in the science department to make sure that the eye wash stations all get flushed once a month. So again, systemization of these things that have been, that have not had a systematic way of looking at them. We've reestablished the site based committees, which were suspended after COVID. And we've established the district level committee and we're sharing all the risk data with the sites. ERP system. This was aside from last year's where I said, this is all the UKG stuff, we're turning off time and leave. Well, over the course of time, we've had to turn off more of UKG. And fundamentally, our finance and HCM, human capital systems did not talk to one another as been expected. I'm sorry?
Did you say they're not?
They did not, correct. We were told that they would talk to each other. What we were basically told is you could put information into one and then it would push it over to the other. And you could pick one or the other as your, of your system of record and it would push data over to the other. And it does not do that. So right now, we're doing a lot of double entry to maintain human capital and finance systems. So in the course of configuration, one module's functionality was elevated and it basically made the rest of the functionality skewed. And lastly, as you all know, or as those who've been on the board for a while know, we spent probably twelve to eighteen months really trying a variety of fixes. We, we really, really tried to, to, to not have to start from square one, but to back it up and try to fix the system that we had. And at the end of the day, that was just not feasible. So what we've done is we've employed a consultant, Plant Moran, to help us assess the current system and the current, the current processes in the system and recommend both process and structural changes and to recommend system acquisition. One of the questions that I got is what ERPs are being considered? To be honest with you, we're not there yet. The system acquisition piece, we, we, we haven't even begun identifying the, the ones to be considered because we're still in the, what are our processes and systems analysis process. And that is, that second bullet in assessment phase. We do anticipate completion of the assessment and receipt of the recommendations, probably spring of twenty six. I think everybody's hedging and saying summer of twenty six so that they're under promising, over delivering. But I think that it's probably spring of twenty six is when we'll see the recommendations. And then we'll start to take those actions to acquire and implement. The next step will be the acquisition, the configuration, the testing and the go live. And I think the, the organization has the right people in the right places with the right viewpoints on this to really ensure that, that we get this one right. viewpoints on this to really ensure that we get this one right. If I'm sitting here in 36 months explaining why the system doesn't work, then that's an absolute disaster. And frankly, if that's the case, I don't know that those of us that are trying to solve this thing, I don't know what to say about it. We will have failed, just to put it bluntly. We are putting a lot of our energy, reputation, and organizational political capital on getting this one right. That was a fast flyby. I've got a bunch of questions and some answers, and I can either try to tackle those now or we can tackle those in another format. What is the board's preference?
Directors, do you would you like the format in something that he's answered all the questions, so you can definitely get some rest, or do you all want to ask the questions now and go from there? You sure? It's your call. Because people submitted questions beforehand, they'd be able to answer some of these similar things, but if you have particular questions you want to ask now, or you want to do it in a different format, it's your call.
I'm fine seeing those in a different format than here, but I do want to say, I really appreciate your thoroughness and your honesty, and I think you read the board's priorities well, and I appreciate that. Will you remind me when we adopted UKG?
I want to say that we adopted you, well, we...
What?
It was 2022.
What's that?
It was 2022, I believe, correct?
We first took on, part of it is, part of my hesitation is, we took pieces of UKG. So the first thing we did was we took UKG time and leave and financed, business office took that, and ran with the implementation of that, and I think that started around 2022.
Real quick, have you all kind of surmised, like, at what point, like, at what threshold do you, are you all thinking about, at what threshold do you leave UKG and transfer to, like, Oracle or?
We're there. We're there. Yeah, we're there. We're there. I mean, I'm waiting for the consultants to provide us with a recommendation, but I will fall over in a dead faint if the recommendation is to keep UKG and try to fix it. I think we are beyond that.
Cool, thank you. Director Tomlin, do you have anything?
Well, one of the questions I sent over to you, Steve, was just wondering about strategies that you all have to try and encourage more candidates for minorities, especially Latinx, since we are, you know, there is a discrepancy there in the number of students that are Latinx versus the people working at the district, so.
Yeah, one of the things that I want to celebrate real quick is that's an area where we've made real growth. We have had a 50% increase in Latinx representation. There's a lot to be done still, but that is an area that we've seen some incremental growth and change. We have sought to attend the most diverse job fairs, the most diverse job fair in Oregon is PSU. We attend that regularly. We actually tried attending some other job fairs, some broader job fairs. We did some job fairs in Southern California. We attempted to get into a job fair in Northern Arizona. Ultimately, we've determined that that's not effective, and that determination is not only an analysis of our own hiring practices, but we've had conversations. One of the things Ryan does well, Ryan Kelling does well, is network with other district hiring and recruitment retention folks. And Salem Kaiser is an example where we were seeing them showing up, for example, at the other job fairs, and we were comparing, hey, are you guys getting candidates out of here? And neither of us were getting candidates. So that's one of the things we tried. I think it was the right thing to try, but I think that it was also the right thing to stop doing because we just weren't pulling candidates out of there. We ensure that our promotional materials reflect that we're a welcoming organization. We have Spanish, we have Mandarin on our banners, on our handouts. We have the Alternative Pathways Program, which is an alternative method for moving from being a classified employee to obtaining licensure and moving into certified ranks. It prioritizes bilingual qualifications as a bona fide qualification. I don't know if you're familiar with John Powell's targeted universalism, but the notion is that if you are identifying something that is a bona fide, useful provision that applies to everybody, there may be certain groups that benefit from it differently than other groups benefit from it. And so with bilingualism, we do think that that is assisting in giving Latinx folks opportunities to move into a career advancement program. So those are some of the things that we're doing, Director Tomlin, that I think have probably contributed and that we're continuing to do and to explore.
I'd just like to add, this has been a priority of this board for the entire time I've been here. It's also been a priority of this administration. And I will tell you, when you have 2,000 employees and you have, let's just generalize and say roughly 5% to 10% turnover, moving the needle on 2,000 total staff when you have at any given point 40 to 50 total hires to make annually with certified and those examples, to be able to make the impact that's happened in the last five years, I want to give a lot of credit to the strategies that we've employed, especially in our HR department and our recruitment department, to make sure that we are promoting this idea that we want a staff that reflects our student population. It's a work in progress. We're very proud of the work we've done so far. We still have more work to do.
Right, thank you, Ms. Aaron. I appreciate it very much. Please get well.
Can I, Michael, before we let him go, can I just do one more?
Yeah, go.
Sort of an addendum. In the questions that I submitted, I asked a little bit about staff evaluation, and partially this is because, should we get into the unfortunate scenario of having to do a reduction in force? Those staff evaluations are pretty important in the collective bargaining agreement. Are we in a place where that's all, like, dialed, or is that also stuck behind this HCM situation?
No, in terms of...
The ready availability of our ability to assess the competency and merit of our staff such that we can execute upon the terms of our collective bargaining agreement.
Sorry, I apologize for interrupting your question. Before you had completed it, my apology sincerely. No, because that is less dependent upon infrastructurally stored data and more dependent and driven by the assessment of our administrative leadership. And so the first thing I do want to emphasize is that the predominant factor for any kind of reduction in force remains seniority. But the statutes provide for a departure from seniority based on competency, merit, and the linguistic and cultural diversity. And that would largely be driven, so for example, competency is measured by recency of activity in the area. So that is data, and it would be data that would be readily accessible to us. So I don't believe that any of those judgments and decisions, if there were ever an instance where departure from seniority was warranted, I don't think that that would be hostage to our lack of a system, of an automated system. Do I think having an automated system would make being able to run multiple scenarios and anticipate the impacts of multiple scenarios easier to do? Absolutely it would, and I look forward to having that tool. But I don't think it prevents us from being able to consider the elements that would be appropriate to consider in making those decisions.
Thank you for that question, Director Lynch. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Aaron. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Have a great rest of your evening. Deputy Superintendent Burke, I believe is now to you.
All right, with this action item, this is, if you recall, last month's board meeting, I kind of outlined the ways in which we utilize the funding that we receive from what's called SIA, or Student Investment Account. Generally speaking, our methodology hasn't changed over the past couple of years in terms of the things that we would like to invest in. And the moral of the story here, like other areas of funding, is that we would like to invest in people. And as we get kind of flat funding, really what that means is a cut, essentially. And so what we find is that although our interests or initiatives haven't really changed directly related to the expenditures that we are interested in, the sort of wideness of how that money can be spent has changed because much of the things that we believe are important are now being funded, frankly, from our general fund. So with this motion, this is just approving that you all are saying, yes, we're going to go ahead and accept these grant dollars to do the things that I described last month as the things that we will be investing in.
Director, do you have any questions about what Deputy Superintendent Burke is mentioning? I remember from last time, so I read over it a few times as well. So any questions or things you'd like to bring up? All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Burke, and we now hear, we have heard from Dr. Burke. I say, is there any discussion on the action item? If not, I would like to entertain a motion.
I move to approve the SIA grant agreement as presented.
Is there a second?
I second.
It is a motion by Director Tomlin and second by Director Fisher. Any discussion? Okay, it's now time for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Burke. All right, here's an action item that we definitely need to take care of tonight, directors, and definitely bring to our attention. We're now moving on to our action item regarding the Budget Committee. The Ben Lepine Schools Budget Committee is comprised of seven elected members of the school board and seven members of the community. The Budget Committee works with district staff to review and approve the school district budget each year. A budget committee member's term is three years. Excuse me, term is three years. Carla Marsh Rhodes and Robert Pinson's term expires on June 30th, 2025. That is a beautiful day, June 30th. It's my birthday, that's why I like to say it. I know everything ends on my birthday, so it's kind of cool. So Ms. Rhodes has expressed a desire to continue to serve as the Budget Committee in Position 5C. The Board may make a choice to reappoint Ms. Rhodes by majority of vote for a third, three-year term ending on June 30th, 2028, and may choose to post a position as vacant. By law, at least one member of the Budget Committee must be a member of the district's Educational Equity Advisory Committee. Robert Pinson previously held the position in C4 and is along interested in serving on the Budget Committee. The Equity Coalition is recommending Apollo Akira, yeah, let's make sure, to fill this position for C. Apollo has been a member of the Equity Coalition for five years, and is academic advisor at OSU Cascades, and is bilingual and bicultural. The Board may choose to appoint, and by majority of vote, for a third term ending on June 28th is chosen. If not, we'll be able to post a vacant position. On October 8th, 2025, Seth Eisenberg resigned from Position 3 due to moving out of the district. The Board of Director must appoint a replacement to vacant position term ending June 30th, 2027. The Board must take action to declare the seat vacancy as well as next steps in filling the vacant seat. It is suggested that the position be declared vacant, and the Board accept applications for the vacancy through January 30th. As February 10th, 2026, Board meeting boards should be prepared to discuss the applicants and determine next steps in filling the vacancy. Details regarding the vacancy will be posted on the Board page of the district website. Are there any discussions on the topic of the suggested process of accepting application? All right, here it is, no discussion. I like this, entertain a motion.
I move to reappoint Kara Marsh Rhodes in the Position 5 seat, to appoint Apollo Akira in the Position 4 seat, and to advertise the vacant Position 3 seat to the community.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. It has been moved by Director Chadwick and second by Director Lynch. Thank you. Any discussion for this motion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you very much. The ayes have it. All right. And now we'll turn it over to Dr. Cook and present the administrative policies and regulations that District is reviewing right now.
Thank you, Chair LaGrand. There's quite a bit in your packet, 12 policies and regulations that are all related to curriculum and instructional materials that we're going to push out for review for this month. The first one is, in accordance with Senate Bill 1098, which, if you recall, was a, kind of got a lot of news this past year about who can actually make decisions on selecting, retaining, and the use of library materials. And so a lot of modifications came out of OSBA to line up with that new bill. The second one is Bill IFBP, the District Curriculum. This is a board policy. You all will have to vote on this, and this will be one that you guys will choose. This replaces IF-AR, Curriculum Development. We are pushing this policy out for public feedback. It will return for the Board's consideration at the January Board meeting. We also have II-AAP, Instructional Materials, and then six corresponding regulations for reconsideration of materials and independent adoption of core instructional materials. These alignments, these are in alignment with those changes and the deletion of those previously noted policies. The final policy is II-ABB-AP, Use of Feature Film, Video, and Other Media. All these policies are going out for public feedback. We look forward to receiving that feedback, and we will also be bringing back the feedback for your consideration, especially on the one that the Board would have to consider a vote for. Glad to answer any questions.
Director Tomlin, you okay? Any other directors? All right.
Just, I saw that the, like, at least as of when we got this board packet, the Google form for collecting feedback wasn't up and running. Is that going to, that's going to be up and running like now, or, okay, great, perfect.
Yep, yep, that'll be, it'll be fixed, I think, as we speak.
Students, you have any questions about any of these? Because there's something you all will be looking at.
A quick question. So what do you mean by, like, the core instructional materials? Like, what would this look like? What would be governed by this policy?
Core instructional materials are like the primary things that the Board approves as a material for consideration, for, for example, like Math 1 or Math 2. The Board has to approve the adoption of that. Then there's also supplemental materials that have to be on a list. And so supplemental materials are materials that teachers and instructors may choose to use. They can't just necessarily go grab something off the street. And so core materials, when we say, for example, we're using EL as our language arts material, K through 12, that means we're using that in all of our schools. And so core is inner, kind of think of that as the, that is our primary resource that people are using in those classroom environments.
That is often also governed by state regulations, and they will often say, here's the group that you can choose from as options.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
And it's not a federal thing, it's a state thing and a local thing, who sets the curriculum? Everybody always thinks it's national, because like when they were saying they were trying to cut the Department of Education, most of that stuff was Title I, special ed, free lunch, all those different things, all the protections is what they're talking about. Reset the curriculum and being able to look at those, but we work with everyone to be able to get the feedback on the information. Yeah, go. You got a question?
Do you mind going over what is in IF-BP and what does your curriculum need to vote from the Board for changes?
Go. He's, she's pulling, he's pulling it up right now, sorry. Did I say she? I'm sorry. I didn't mean to. I know, it's going super slow. It's the core instruction. Yep.
Yeah, so the... The primary role of this policy is to establish that the Board is the responsible governing body over establishing what core instructional materials will be utilized for core curricular materials that will be chosen by the district to establish that curricular vision. And so the difference that, what we're proposing in this policy change is, it was currently an administrative regulation, which in effect makes the superintendent and his team or her team the responsible party. We're suggesting that this is very much a part of governance, which is the role of the Board. They should be the one that makes that decision for the direction of the Board so that it aligns with the vision as established by the Board.
Thank you.
All right, no worries. Thank you.
Sorry, one more question.
Nice, go, keep going.
Policy II-ABB-AP, it's the last one on the list, the feature films, videos, and other media. What would that look like? Like, how would that affect classes?
Let me pull it. It's just a change.
So many of these changes, and this applies to this one, it's not really changing anything that we are doing currently, but the Oregon School Boards Association has... Boards Association has standardized all of their policies. And so as we have like over 400 policies, they will say, hey, now is the time at which you probably need to line up in these different ways. And so you'll see some struck-through things and some blue pieces in there. Really, it's somewhat saying the same thing, but lining up with some consistency of language across the state. So this is, this is suggested by Oregon School Boards Association, and in general, I'll say, most school boards kind of adhere to that because this is a group that's, that's really focused on recognition of policy. But it still is the work of the Board to say, yes, we're going to approve it after we receive public comment.
I'll just add two real specifics. That's a really good answer from Dr. Burke. The two specifics are, we will not violate copyright laws. And secondly, we will have guidelines for who watches G-rated movies, PG-rated movies, R-rated movies, and I think it's now they call it NC-17, I think is the rating, like what used to be an X-rated movie. Like there are policies around whether or not a district can show something that's X-rated. That's, those guidance already existed. It's more explicitly lined out. So how those sets of guidance is captured in the policy is what we're pushing out.
Because we've got to protect ourselves just in case. All right, all right. Thank you, Dr. Cook. And now, Dr. Cook, Superintendent Report.
Okay, I have five items. I'm going to kick one of them to Dr. Burke, as she's been working on that quite diligently. But mine are, all four of them are, that I'll be talking about are going to be quick. The first one is I just want to remind folks that on November 19th, we had the Safe School Alliance meeting where we, all the regional district, law enforcement agencies, fire departments, school district agencies, all met together at the High Desert ESD to recommit to this established that every student in every one of our schools in central Oregon deserves a safe, orderly space to go to school, and that we have great partnerships with all of those first responders and agencies to make sure that that is a, a shared vision for our entire community. And I'm really grateful for the opportunity to participate in that and for our law enforcement and fire department partnerships that exist in that. The second one is just a, a pretty significant contingency of our leaders in the district went to the Coastal Law Conference last week. As you know, this, this is a longstanding conference that happens in the state in which we get a lot of our guidance on systems improvement that we can have at the state level. We did have a very nice representation there. It was also a very meaningful and good experience for our administrators. Thirdly, I just want to share that I got the invitation, and much thanks to Director Lynch for helping coordinate this. I got asked to, to be a part of a panel discussion at Oregon Business Council held their Leadership Summit on Monday, which was yesterday. And it was at the Convention Center in Portland, not Salem, but I went to both, so it's okay. And it was a good session. I appreciate, yeah. I appreciate the opportunity to be on that panel with other educators and just really, quite frankly, advocating for things that we need to do in the state of Oregon to make sure and guaranteeing what we can do for students in our system, not just in our own school districts, but across the entire state. And last but not least, just an update, a quick update, we are pushing out communication. As you know, there's been continued interest in the custodial fire at Miller Elementary School. We've, we will be pushing out, we've pushed out some communication, as you all were updated on today. We've pushed out another communication tonight saying we will release the entire report from the, the people that ran the tests, I guess they were, the analysts, I forget the name of them, Apex, I think is the name of the company. And we have a full operational report that has come out of our, our Operations Department and a summary, if you will, that will be coming from our communications team. We expect that to be out tomorrow. We appreciate the interest, the feedback, and the engagement with our families and our educators about the importance of making sure those environments are, are safe. I think people will be, well, I don't want to editorialize, I want people will be, but we are glad to share this on behalf of, of all of those entities that partnered with us to ensure. And a lot of kudos to our operations departments in making sure that environment was clean. And then my last update, I'm going to kick to Lisa. I want to just talk a little bit about the work that's been going on, talking about the Realms High School and BTA High School merger and the relocation of Realms Middle School into Buckingham Elementary, so.
All right, so a latest update is that as of today, bilingual messaging related to any of the questions that we've received through our QR code and any of the information that we had pushed out are now posted prominently on each of those schools' websites, so people can access information there. We will also be at the high school level posting another like QR code that people can access to continuously add some information or another opportunity for kind of a feedback loop. Last week and this week, we had some parent meetings related to the Realms High School and BTA merge that were at BTA. So families from the Brinson campus were able to get a tour of what that campus looks like. And then each of our current leadership did some presentation about some core aspects of each of those current programs and what kind of our hopes are in terms of moving forward. We are very much deep in the visioning stage, which is for some people very exciting and for others unsatisfying. And so that's just a very real state of where we are right now. As we move into the new year, we'll be having different conversations with the Buckingham families as well as Realms Middle School. The thing that will happen at the same time as that is that choice area options are going to be opening. And so that choice option window closes on January 23rd. And so I believe 23rd, maybe 26th, don't quote me on that. And so we are in this phase where we need to kind of hurry up and get enough visioning done such that we can describe a place that is, you know, attractive and interesting for our students and is based on what our students have told us is of interest to them. So our leaders are working many times a week to kind of get a pulse of what are students thinking about this. They're beginning to bring small groups of students over to the BTA campus to just have engagement with different leadership groups and start to be visioning of what this new place will be. I think the, the big elephant in the room, to be totally honest, is what does staffing look like? And that is, the answer to that is definitely unsatisfying as we are in this space right now because staffing is based on enrollment, and we won't know enrollment until about two months from now. And so while people are visioning a new space, they may or may not have a position in exactly the, the space that they are thinking about. And so beginning tomorrow, I'll be having staffing conversations individually with all staff related to each of those buildings, just to say, what is your perfect world? What, like what are your hopes for next year? I can't make the promises that they will absolutely get that, but for some, a merge right now may not be on their bingo card. And so they may want to avail themselves to other options as they exist throughout our district. And so I want to be able to hear that from staff that are affected by this move and then be able to place people in the very best positions that we can moving forward. So we are in, in kind of a hurry-up stage in order to have a lot of unknowns just kind of live with us for a little while, and then we can start to really have rubber meeting the road and building. So lots of work going on right now in that area. For Buckingham, the main piece that we're engaged in right now is really related to space and what that looks like because there may be some components that have, that are related to permitting needs. So if we want to make a space, which we do, want to make a space that is demonstrably separate from the other, what is currently the Buckingham space, that's an interest for kind of both groups. There's some permitting that's involved with that. Oftentimes, that's like a six-month type of process. So we're trying to identify those, those areas that are of most interest within the next week so that we can have our facilities team start to work on that. Meanwhile, our leadership team is working on designing some of that parent information night. Later next week, our, the Realms Middle School staff will have their first time to explore the current Buckingham campus, and they'll do kind of a meet and greet in connection with the Buckingham staff. So we're looking forward to that. So that is my update on this merger and move.
Thank you, Dr. Burke, and thank you, Dr. Cook. Director, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm wondering if the district has targets or goals for retention of students as part of the merger, specifically at the high school level? Like is there a goal? Like we're hoping to hold on to 80% of the kids who used to go to Realms. We're hoping to hold on to 110%.
We, we don't have a goal that we have like put on paper, said this, but I think generally our goal would be, we would like to fill up that building. We would like to have a small school that is at capacity. That's sort of our dream moving forward for any of those spaces is that they remain very attractive to our families and our students, regardless of where they're coming from, they can see themselves in this space. And so we're trying to design for those two areas, recognizing small schools can be expensive, and we are, we are okay with that if they are at capacity for the time being.
Hi, my question pertains to the transition to middle schools going back into the elementary school buildings and that transition, and what feedback or information are you getting there? Are we considering using some of the mentor, I mean, excuse me, some of the middle school students mentors possibly or mentorship program within the school? I don't know, I was just thinking of some different things.
Yeah, our, yes, we are engaged in all of those conversations. We are engaged from a curricular standpoint in that Buckingham is a place that is engaged in STEM education, and there are some parallels that exist for STEM and expeditionary learning. And so we want to identify those and have students kind of be, be aware of those so that there can be some excitement built. We have some staffing, like a current seventh grade teacher has been connecting with like a third grade teacher, and they're trying to design some of those opportunities. So from a curricular standpoint, yes, that's happening. I think when we've seen concern or heard concern, it's primarily about the different ages within the same building. And what we know is that we have two successful K8 programs within our Ben Lepine Schools as well as across the state that demonstrate for us, this is a possibility, this, there are ways that this can be done well. And we want to provide some separation to recognize, you know, middle is not the same as elementary, and we want there, and we hear from middle school students like, we don't just want to see some baby playground thing or something, you know, that doesn't feel like it's very honoring either. And so we want to kind of be listening to all of these pieces and build for those opportunities moving forward. But yes, we see some synergy. We see some opportunities for just sort of reinvention of some spaces that have been a little bit stagnant, honestly, for, for a couple of years.
Cool, thank you. I'm excited. Any Directors, any other questions? All right, thank you so much. And we'll now open the floor for Director's comments. Director Tomlin, let's start with you.
Thank you, Chair Legrand. Well, I really appreciated getting the report on the alternative learning options. I really believe those programs that are focused on providing workforce, workforce training, like youth build, are so important for that population of students to give them the skills that they can then take out and get good paying jobs, which sounds like some of them are, so, as well as a well-rounded education. So I'm, I'm excited to see that youth build coming into the fold there. And other than that, I just hope everyone has a safe and enjoyable holiday period. Thank you.
Director Lynch?
Thank you. Yeah, so first, thanks to Superintendent Cook for participating in the Oregon Leadership Summit on Monday. That was a really important opportunity to connect with education thought leaders from around the state and the sort of nexus with the business community who cares so deeply about the continued improvement and success of our K-12 system. I want to say congratulations to all of the high schools on completing their fall musicals, especially to Summit and Bend who worked together in a very successful partnership to put on a show in the absence of an auditorium at Bend High. I hope that was like a really great experience for everybody and, you know, can lead to future partnerships. It was creative and we got it done, and actually, it's still happening. You can still come, Thursday, Friday, Saturday at 7:00 PM at Summit High. And I want to finally say thank you to all of the parents who've been participating so diligently in our various feedback collection processes this fall. So we have parents and community members who participate on our technical, techno, technology advisory committee. We've been having groups of parents and community members in, working on our fundraising policy. We have had parents and community members participating in this Realms conversation. I know that all of this is time and effort, and I want to, you know, reiterate how deeply important that community feedback is to the operation of the district and encourage everybody to, you know, reach out to your school board or district leadership. If you can't physically participate in these meetings, it's hard, it's hard. I was five minutes late tonight running in circles myself. It is challenging to both shuttle your kids around and participate in these feedback sessions, but it's vital. So thank you for those who do that, and please continue to do so.
All right, Director Chadwick?
Just want to thank Jack, Brendan, and Caroline for still being here with us tonight. I hope y'all got something out of this and look forward to contributing more in the future. I also wanted to thank the students from Design Justice who brought the importance of the sustainability position to our attention. It was definitely on our minds, and I couldn't agree more in the importance of sustainability and environmentalism. And lastly, just, you know, as a, as a parent of a Realms student, all this talk weighs very heavily on myself also and, and one of my children. And just to echo Director Lynch, I am more than happy to connect with folks, and I am in the same boat as y'all. So, thank you.
Director Fisher?
Yeah, I want to take a moment to celebrate the 50th anniversary of the IDA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Back in 1975, President Ford signed this monumental law, which ensures a free and appropriate public education for students with disabilities so they can receive the services they need to attend school with their typical peers. I'm also glad to have had a recent conversation with Dr. Cook regarding his commitment to Ben Lepine students with disabilities, and I appreciate the hard work that's being done in this district. There's more to do, and I want to work on how to be part of productive conversations about better supporting our students with disabilities going forward, in addition to continuing to advocate for more state funding when the opportunity arise, arises. I also want to thank students, families, and community members for reaching out and sharing their thoughts and experiences about special education. It helps me to get a better sense of what's working well and also what needs more attention and clarity, and I think that also helps this Board. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Fisher. Thank you, Directors. I want to thank all the staff, all the coordinators, all the students through this past year. This is our last meeting for the year until the next year. And I want to thank Dr. Burke, Janet Portnoy, our board clerk, the staff in the back staying so late as well. I appreciate y'all being here, and I want to thank Dr. Cook. But the thing I want to do most is this, as we close, I want to ground us in a term that has so many meanings, and I know we've, we've been butchering this word or butchering this term, but I want to make sure we bring it up, is DEI. Because at its core, it's primarily related to empathy. Because I think, yes, we know it stands for diversity, equity, and inclusion. Diversity is what the rich mix of people we serve and work alongside. Equity is how we commit to removing barriers so everyone has a fair chance to succeed. Inclusion is the experience, making sure every person feels seen, valued, and able to fully participate. But equity, excuse me, but empathy, empathy is the why. It's the heartbeat that makes any of this real. We have a real wins to celebrate this year. We've honored Teachers of the Year, Administrator of the Year, leaders who embody what service really looks like. We celebrate the champions of students. We're strengthening student voice through the council, giving them a better footing in our district. We see teachers every day creating phenomenal classroom environments that are inclusive, welcoming, and affirming. We're slowly implementing a new grading system, continuing to train teachers and staff on what that impact looks like. Students become more involved isn't about rushing, it's about doing right for people. We make meaningful headways in science, reading, and rigor, and staying the focus of what helps students grow. But here's what I'm hearing mostly and most clearly from our community. People are tired, they're stressed, they're overwork, they carry uncertainty about the world beyond these walls. And so before we leave, leave anyone else, I want to invite all leaders at all levels, including our Board itself, to start with our, yourself. Give yourself some grace. Take this break to reflect. Know what is okay to ask for help. It's okay to say I don't know. It's okay to say I don't understand, or even say, can I get more clarity on the specific things? Because this is true leadership. If we continue to show up for one another and to truly be present, truly effective, then we must continue to lead with empathy. It's not a buzzword, but a daily practice. I wish you a restful holiday, whatever you celebrate, and I hope we all return renewed spirit, steady hearts, and deep commitment to leading with empathy for ourselves and to leading with empathy for ourselves and for others, for every student and person that we work with in this district. I want to thank y'all for your time this year. I want to thank you for allowing me to continue to be the Board Chair that represents you guys in so many different ways. You're all in so many different ways. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned, and our next Board meeting will be January 13th, 2026, and happy new year.